Commissioner's philosophy is not here. And we'll move on to capital improvement program review, starting with the marinas.
Hi, perfect. Thanks so much for having me here to present the capital improvement plan for the warranty and Hammond marinas. This is my first time doing this, so I'll just kind of do a quick overview and then let me know if you have any questions. This capital improvement plan, the hope is that addresses some of a number of the critical issues facing both the warranty and the Hammond Marina's infrastructure. We have a lot of challenges with our aging piling dock roads and overall Marina facilities, but with our limited funding, we are focusing on piles and dock replacements at this time. You'll see our in the warranty Marina, we've got our power replacement on E dock, the inner basin and our big commercial dock. Hopefully we'll start the engineering on that. And then in the ham in the Marina, we've got a number of projects that we're just getting kind of getting started. The dredging project, that's just in case we have for this year, the funds for this year are just in case we have any permitting needs. Hoping to have all the permitting wrapped up this budget year, but we will see. More pile replacement. We've added a fish cleaning and crab cooking area just to kind of help with drainage. We've got the center launch ramp and him and Marina. Those are our possible funds for this year. We're hoping for a grant from the Oregon State Marine Board. And then also we've got a feasibility study for the Hammond fishing pier.
So apologize, I apologize in advance if you already covered this, but the inner basin dock replacement, that is just general dock replacement funds, correct?
Yes, yes. And we have, I actually did want to make a note about that. We've actually moved that out of our CIP plan. You'll notice that's a big change from last year. We've transferred it into our operating budget and we've actually the you're talking about the piles or the?
Number 120 warrants an inter basin dock replacement, 80,000 bucks security funding. Yes, not pile dock.
We have it as a piles replacement.
So 119 is E dock pile replacement right below its warrant and inter basin dock replacement.
Yes. So it's my understanding that we're going to be removing that and moving it into our operating budget. And you'll see that at our future budget meeting in May when we discuss that, but we've broken out our repair and maintenance budget for warranty and Hammond and addressed these dock repairs and renovations under that budget and itemized it so we can track it each year. And then when we do the CIPs, we'll identify if we're doing a whole dock replacement, we will identify a specific whole dock replacement. Not just have like a lump of money for the entire basin.
So I understand this, if I understand this correctly, you're saying that because you're not replacing full docks, you're going to make the dock replacement budget, an operational budget that is itemizing the budget.
Yeah, it's online.
Okay. So this will eventually get removed from the final CIP that the commission will then approve. Correct city manager?
That's correct. Yes. And I think it's even.
Are you looking at page 120 though, for $80,000?
Yes.
That's what Henry's looking at though, the mayor.
Looking at the page, I'm looking at the.
You're looking at the overview.
Table.
You're looking at the.
Okay, switching through pages.
But the page does have warrant and inter basin pile replacement, and it says that it is to obtain permits to begin replacing piles. So it is specific to piles, not to docks.
So that's a typo from the table.
Yeah, I might apologize. I apologize mayor. For for page 120 in the overview, it shows it as a inner basin dock replacement, but when you go to that page in the document, it says it is the inner basin pile replacement.
So the docs will remain or sorry, the pile replacement will remain in the CIP, the dock replacement will go into ops budget, right?
I believe that's correct. Unless we're identifying. If we are replacing a whole entire dock and we are.
Oh, I understand that.
Then it will remain in the capital improvement program, but the marinas have been maintaining or trying to switch out. Thank you. They've been doing maintenance, which extends the life of the dock and instead of repairing or lumping that in with repair and maintenance, we are going to have a separate line on that. So we can more easily track it. And at that point, if they are extending the life, it will have to be capitalized on our fixed assets, but it will not necessarily come out of their capital reserve. So there's kind of two separate things I think we're talking about. I just wanted to make sure it was clear. I don't think that that project you're referring to for 80,000 is going to disappear from the final CIP. It should remain in there.
And it should be piles in that first first overview. So our apologies, it is the piles that is the piece we're looking at for 80,000. So that will remain.
Gotcha. So I see. And then the E dock replacement, the 450,000, that's what's currently in your cap reserves to burn and not what urban renewal is expected to contribute, correct?
Um, it's my understanding for for our portion of that, we're looking at 75,000 and the remaining would come from urban renewal for this next budget year.
So city managers, is that?
So that is.
So you're saying instead of a million dollars, we're going to put 375 from.
That is the design phase that we are saying it is about 450 for design.
Design.
Yes. So that is the first part of the the dock replacement. So we have put that down as when you look at page 121, you'll see it is actually a total of like 2.7 million that's quoted.
Yeah.
But we are looking at the design phase for this next fiscal year. And then the following year is the, you know, it is looking at what is left of urban renewal dollars and based on the priority list you put together. So that is the design phase for this next CIP for the next fiscal year.
So you're only doing the design phase for 2025.
That is correct.
It's design and permitting.
And permits. Thank you. Yes. Yeah. So that includes permits.
And there's quite a buffer there. So that way, if we could possibly get started, we we have the money to.
And then this has always been one of my biggest issues and that is overrides. But when you're doing something like this, we should be, they should be pretty close to the figures, right? This is, they shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any kind of amendments or additional charges.
So I think you're referring to the construction phase.
Right.
So that's the 10%.
Too.
Did contingency.
Be that this portion.
So for this portion, no, because this is for permits and design, we have budgeted higher in case of, but it it should capture the total for sure. Yes.
So we've captured for what the cost should be.
For design and.
Construction portion, we're not looking at that yet.
We're not. Yeah, that's.
So, okay, that's why I just want to make sure because I don't.
Yes.
My biggest point is always about the expense.
Yes.
Override that we always end up having from contractors who come in and do work.
Yes.
All right. And then the works gift would be different than the, that's a separate vessel from the, that's like the scout that we currently have replaced, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just.
Couldn't find a synchronization between the scout and the fire vessel.
Trying mayor, this last year we had.
I know it's probably not possible. I just.
We had hopes and then that hope went away. We keep trying for a duel. The problem is some of that functionality for the low dock deck versus the fire safety apparatus, there's a challenge there, but we keep trying. And if there is a possibility, we definitely consider it.
All right. Any questions on Winston and Hammond marinas? All right, thank you. What do you want to move to next city manager?
Uh, next I would like to move to the police department, which starts on page 11. And just a note for those attending, we didn't go over everything because a lot of these we have already touched throughout the year and are well aware of them. We're trying to give the the upper level review and then if there's questions on specific projects, but we will try to at least touch on a lot of the projects as we go through them very briefly. Uh, so next is the police. And that starts on page 10.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, mayor commissioners. So ironically, I normally just have vehicles on the CIP and don't appear at this meeting because there's it's kind of an ongoing vehicle replacement. The only thing I will comment on the vehicles is all of us in law enforcement are watching the tariffs and I'm, if everything goes the way the doom and gloom says, this isn't going to be enough money, but for both vehicles, but we'll see how that goes. And I didn't think I needed to change anything and and go from there. But the exciting thing is I actually do have a CIP project on here. And I'd like to address some issues that the front office staff had. They've made safety comments for several years on the window glass over there and not being ballistic. And the original plans for this building show that that's supposed to be ballistic glass. I've checked and it is not ballistic glass. It's double thick, but it's not ballistic. And so that is a concern. And of course, actually, it's a concern probably for any area where someone's dealing with the public and coming up probably more so over here because we tend to deal with people that are very, very upset. Although Jessica could probably argue that they deal with this as many people over there, but anyway, so I'd like to go ahead and replace that glass with ballistic glass. And then re, I call it a remodel, but it's just more of a capture the space that we have, get rid of a bunch of the as you guys, when you guys did your tour a few weeks ago, saw all the large four drawer file cabinets and Kat Catherine Stevens had suggested that we go with a similar file storage system as they have in Astoria, where they go six foot up to the ceiling and their files are like this, and then you crank them and they go together and they move apart and you can get in between. And it like triples the spot file space because it uses both the height thing. You're not pulling a drawer out. And so I priced those out and put those into the project and we'd like to put that in there so we can at least have several years of files right there and they're not spread out all over the apartment. As you guys saw, they're in every nook and cranny you can find and they have to go find them and stuff. So anyway, that's what I'd like to do. And then it also will help rearrange the front seating area there a little bit. So there's a little better workspace ergonomically for the 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 staff up front there. And again, I'd like to bring on, we're trying to bring on a part time admin assistant over here as well. And then that way at certain periods, you could have three people there or most likely Kat will be back in doing her evidence stuff and stuff, but we still need that that space up front to her workspace and stuff.
All right. Any questions for the police chief?
It's just, I'm concerned about the tariffs as well.
About the what?
I've looked, I'm concerned about the tariffs as well. Have we ever looked at outstanding inventory, maybe 2024 inventory that may be sitting out there that may be available to us or?
So, uh, yes, all of us, uh, we talk and stuff and there are several dealers who overbought. I don't know how they knew what was coming or not what was coming, but there are a lot of stuff out there and we could probably get a vehicle off the lot after the the new budget starts. A lot of times Jessica and the finance would like me to wait though, and order those a little bit later as you know, you don't want to hammer the budget with these huge purchases, all you know, right at the same time or right at upfront. But yes, we've looked into that. And in fact, the, I just ordered a Durango. And we only bought one of the two vehicles that we were allotted this year. And so it's, we did buy a code compliance pickup locally. So you guys will be happy. You guys are always wanting me to buy local. I did buy one locally for code compliance. But yes, we are watching that and get them at the the current price and not at the post tariff price. But a lot of our vehicles we buy are all American made anyway, so they should be not be affected, but it's the part.
Unfortunately, a lot of those vehicles aren't all aren't all American parts though. So we end up paying tariffs on those.
At least it's not the whole vehicle, but it is parts of it. Your credit.
I, well, I appreciate the fact that you want to hold expenses, especially as at as we turn into 2026 fiscal. But 2025, 26 fiscal, but it still make makes sense to do it as quickly as possible. If we can find inventory, that will save us enough money.
Yeah, we can talk about that when we, when we get there. And I think it depends on our beginning fund balance. And if we're relying on transfers from the general fund, we can't always do those transfers right away. We have to wait for property tax to come in. I think in the police vehicle replacement fund, we probably have enough in beginning fund balance to cover that, but we will definitely take a look at that one when we get, when we get there.
Yeah, anything we can do to purchase those and
good for us.
And chief, are you saying that? So the 20,000 should, are you changing the vestibule to be more as the flat face, but to be have visibility into the hallway too? Or are you just replacing the flat face window?
So it's going to depend on if we want to do the entire window. That window is probably too big. It doesn't need to be that big. It could be shrunk down to a single, because we only deal with one person at a time in the lobby. So it could be shrunk if it would save money to do that because ballistic glass, as you could probably imagine, is not cheap. And that's a lot of the cost in there. But if we did a single, then it could just fill in on either side. But yes, I would probably get a more convex mirrors, things like that, that are out there that we don't have now, but those are very cheap to purchase. They got one over in building planning that that works very well as well. So for the people sitting there. Okay.
So do we have cameras that monitor the hallway?
Yeah. So I have a camera right above the door here that gets the front window in this door here. And it's a, yeah. So if there's movement or anything, it records what's going on.
And if we upgraded the ballistic camera ballistic glass, is there a way to save that other and repurpose it for other departments that might need an upgrade, but definitely, I mean, there's no reason to get rid of it. We can repurpose it somewhere.
It's sometimes hard with glass because it's a certain shape and density. I mean, we could take a look at it, but we are doing another project with building as you'll see later on, but they're also looking at ballistic glass. So I don't know of another project that could use a glass. But we do always look at what's what's being repurposed and see if there's a use before we let it go.
I can't speak to the police, but I know was it admin or at least finance and planning have both had trespass people from the city because of their.
Very aggressive.
Very aggressive and getting to a point.
Yes, threatening behavior has happened in city hall.
I would say that ballistic is going to have to make them like, if we're going to retrofit, we should probably do.
I think he's referring to other places throughout the city though, that could have a use for a glass.
Oh, like a.
Some other project.
So you're talking about like.
They have something today that is less quality, at least they can move up to something that's.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have a spot, but we always review that.
What was the level protection? Is it level one, level two, level three?
Uh, so it'd be a, it'd be a three, similar to our ballistic vests.
Okay.
And stuff. Now, if you go with something, although the it's a little more resilient for rifle rounds than our ballistic vests are. But yes, it it it, I'm looking for something that would stop something. At least initially, obviously, if you keep shooting at ballistic glass in the very same spot, eventually you're going to get through, but enough time to flee.
Right.
If somebody's doing something like that.
Gotcha. Yeah. Any questions?
I have one question. What is the average lifespan of a police vehicle?
We would like it to be around four years. We have some that are six right now. And my 2015 will be 10 and that's being driven by the detective. And again, it depends on a patrol vehicle itself. They're around four or five years and then you start nickel and diming because they start having all kinds of issues. My, my vehicle that the detective has, obviously I put much less miles. I don't have as many hard miles. It's not being driven 24 hours. Essentially 18 to, you know, 16, 18 hours a day. And so it 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 will last longer, but a standard patrol vehicle about four years is good unless, and we share vehicles, so we have two officers assigned to a vehicle and that helps with the lifespan. Obviously, if only one person was driving, it'd be longer than, but yeah, when we're short vehicles, we have three people and it can run truly 24 hours a day in some instances.
So it's more about the hours, not necessarily like the years.
Cause it's. Yeah, it's it's the hours and then certain officers are better with vehicles than other officers.
Can be a little harshly put.
So if you have an officer who's big on traffic, I mean, it's hard on a vehicle because they turn on somebody and they get on it to catch back up with them or try to, you know, that. So you have that go really fast. Then it's cruise around really slow and it's go. And so you have this all in a stop and go. And it's just, you know, city driving is bad on hard on vehicles as it is, ops are even harder on vehicles. And so, uh, yeah. And then the brakes, we end up doing brakes two or three times for the life of a vehicle, constantly on tires about about a year and a half. In a good year, we we have to, no pun intended, but we have to get tires wrote changed all the time because they just, um, we, we just wear the tread out and stuff. And so right now we have vehicles with 140,000 miles on them, 120,000.
Does the Warren's PD pursue?
Yes, we actually just had a pursuit last this weekend, but they're very, we, we don't have a no pursuit policy. OSP has a limited pursuit policy if it's a felony or something that's you know, life threatening or if they've done something to, you know, endanger greatly endanger the public. So then you have that scale. Is the pursuit now outweighing what the original was? So this instance, if you have a traffic violation, you start pursuing them. This was a traffic violation that had a felon felony suspended. So it's a habitual and so they never should have a license. And there was no traffic out there, no threat to the public. Well, I mean, there's always a threat to the public if they wreck or something like that. We were able to deploy stop sticks and they did their job and we took them into custody. So yes, we do pursue, but it's very limited. Sergeant Pierce was the whole time, what's traffic? What are your speeds? What, you know, he knew the weather. He was out there. So the weather hadn't started getting bad or rainy yet. So all that stuff plays into it and we terminate most of our we get, we don't pursue more than we do pursue. We'll terminate very quickly. And the officers are very good about that, too. They understand. I mean, it's, it can, you know, you watch it on TV, it can be exciting and stuff, but then it's just the ramifications are just aren't, don't, the, again, it does not weigh.
Yeah. The only reason I ask is I think county told me something like they don't, they have a non pursuit policy or something close to that.
They have what now?
A non pursuit policy or something close to that.
So it's, it's again, limited. No one has a no pursuit policy because how could you tell your officers you were not to pursue? Where if they just saw somebody execute somebody or they just killed, you know, they were an active shooter at a school and they jumped in a vehicle. We're probably going to do everything we can to stop because they've already shown.
Right.
They have no respect for life and they are going to, and so that one, the scale times tips and it's very balanced.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we have a, it's a limited pursuit policy. And I think everybody has that and we try to do it all the same except for OSP.
Yeah, I don't need to get too far in the policy. The only reason I was asking the question was related related to pursuit rated vehicles versus not pursuit rated.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Difference on that.
Yeah.
But you've satisfied my question. Sorry. Sorry. No, it, I appreciate the explanation. I just want to make sure that we get through the CIP. So thank you. Any other questions for the police chief? All right. We'll move on next department city manager.
Fire department.
They're starting to drop like flies though.
Sure it's on and talk right into it.
Okay. So fire truck replacement, our current engine that is actually out of service right now is 23 years old and overdue. Generally, the lifespan of an engine is about 20 years and that's an FPA standard. So we've milked a couple of extra years out, which has been good, but we've also had to put quite a bit of money into it the last.
The structure of the type three or which one is it?
That's a structural engine. 2725. It's our first out. So currently it's in Klascanai getting repairs. It should be back hopefully tomorrow or the next day. And again, probably with tariffs, there's a lot of steel, a lot of aluminum in that vehicle that it is custom built. And probably comes from Canada. So the price may go up some more soon. So.
What's, um, how many, maybe just for reference, how many structural engines do we have?
We have two structural engines right now, one in Hammond and one here.
And the first out is 23 years old?
Yeah.
And what's the oldest one?
The oldest is ours would be in our engine in reserve and that's, I think it's 28, 29 years old.
Okay. So would this engine then move to reserve status after?
Yeah, it would move to reserve status because it's, it's still a great engine. It just, and it has a lot of has a great maintenance program. So it's been kept up, but.
And the type three, we have two of those two, right?
No, we have one.
Just one.
Yeah.
Okay. And we're looking to replace that as well. Is yeah, we had, we had two that went down. It was a pumper and the.
Yeah, both are first out, first do or first out engines both went down. Luckily, the one in Hammond that went out was able to get it fixed within a couple of days. So and it was a exhaust issue.
Okay, we're both were exhaust.
Both were exhaust.
Were they?
No, the one in Hammond was a diesel exhaust fluid system got fouled up, but the guy brought what he thought might need to repair it and he was able to make the repairs. The engine from here is a what they call P pump or the pressure pump on the diesel side. And it has been a nightmare to to acquire that part. It finally came into Portland and they went down there today to replace it and hopefully we get good news tomorrow that it's ready to go.
Okay. And what's the multi force door prop?
Yeah, multi force door prop. So the only time that we can practice or hone the the skills of forcible entry or breaking indoors or windows is by acquiring a burn house, something that we can burn to the ground, beat up, cut up. And so we don't get that practice enough. And so this multi force door lets you repeatedly work on that skill over and over again at the station where we don't have to go anywhere. There is one other one in the county, Astoria, and we've borrowed that a few times. We have to get a trailer and a forklift and all these things to acquire it. And we only get it for a week. So something that we'd love to have and be able to really hone some of those skills, especially for the new firefighters that we have coming through.
Where are we going to store it?
They'll just store outside. It's a steel. Yeah, it's a steel door. It's going to get beat up and and bashed and but it'll, it'll do well in the weather.
Okay.
What's the life expectancy?
That I would I would think we can get at least 10 to 15 years out of it, if not more. It is a welded item. So if something breaks on it, we can just have take it to the college and have the students fix it for us more than likely or or take it to any other kind of machine shop for repairs.
Basically a thousand dollars a, if you look at it's a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Worth of training material.
Yeah, about that. And then, you know. Yeah.
Uh, the structure engine's got loan debt. As this funding source is that.
Maybe advertising dollars can pay for it.
There you go. Yeah. So I think right now that we are using money received from Tansy Point lease to pay for a ladder truck and that should be paid off. And then in the think the next year, if I remember right. So once those funds are paid off, we can use that money hopefully to purchase this new engine that we're in desperate need of.
To give you another 10 year note or what's the?
We have not acquired financing. Do you remember if it was 10 years, Brian? That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Briefly looked at it of probably six, eight months ago, maybe a year ago now.
Yeah.
We've been talking about it for a little while. I think it was about 10 years though.
I think it was a 10 year, if I remember right. Yep. So that would be the the mechanism to fund that then.
So the Tansy Point funds are flexible?
No, that is a lease agreement with the NIGARDS that we receive the money and then we use it to pay off our loan debt.
Okay.
Cause I saw earmarked for something else in here too. There, there may be two things that we used for that, but that money doesn't change it. It's a.
There's a Tansy Point fund that is separate than the fund receives 10% of the lease revenue every year.
Yeah.
Is Anna's for capital reserve and all that.
Exactly.
So that's fun. It's the same fund. So.
The debt would be paid out of general fund. The Tansy, Tansy Point is the 10% of the general fund lease revenue that we receive from the NIG.
But the revenues from the entire lease go into general fund and get allocated.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes.
But I think to Commissioner's philosophy was point is the, I was under the understanding that we only use the lease increase that went to it was the, when the, when the NIGARDS escalator clause went into their lease, that's when we use the increase of that lease to go towards ladder truck. It wasn't for the whole entire amount minus 10%.
I believe that is correct. That was before I was sitting here. So I don't, I don't have the history on that, but I do not believe it's the full lease revenue and the loan payment we're hoping will stay somewhat similar to to where we have our current loan payment, but we won't know that quite yet.
All right. Any questions to the fire department?
Will the new truck fit okay in our current?
Yeah, we'll have the opportunity to, this would be a custom build. So they'll have our door measurements and make sure that everything will fit in there.
Okay.
Adequately with plenty of room. So, thank you.
Um, and the other question too I had was, it says that we've got, you know, we've got a hundred grand structural fire cap reserves because that's going to be Tansy Point for the other debt loans. We've got grants for the type three. But, and we anticipate we're going to receive those funds. How sure are we of receiving those grants?
Well, we've applied for the grant for the type three engine for the last three years and have not been successful. After talking with FEMA and their area regional rep, he said that in the last couple of years, they've not really focused on structural engines. But they're trying to get back and focus on that and give some more money and allocate it to departments that are in desperate need of vehicles like that.
So I, when I was talking to staff earlier, it sounded like this was a home run, but I'm hearing that it's probably more of a 50 50.
Yeah, probably more be fair assessment.
Okay. The only, the only reason I asked the question is because I've talked to staff about this before is that it the capital improvement program, when we adopt this, it's not just a document of transparency to the gut, to the people of like, here's what we expect to procure. But it's also whether or not a project's really going to happen. And I would
Sure.
Prefer if we secured funding as a yes, no on that than we would as a full yes, because as we go out and communicate to the public, I'm not going to, I shouldn't have to check with staff on. as we go out and communicate to the public, I'm not going to, I shouldn't have to check with staff on whether or not that yes is real or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, unfortunately some of these are grant dependent though. So for example, in the marinas, there is an, uh, marina board grant that is potential, but we do not have secured yet. So sometimes it is very hard to project ahead for a fiscal year regarding whether we have received it. But they are projects that if we get the green light on, we would like to move forward with.
So maybe we create a new, uh, column that just says G. Basically meaning that we have money, but we are grant dependent. And if the grant comes in, then we get it. If we don't, it doesn't.
But that is why in the descriptions you'll see broken down by.
I know, but I'm saying secure funding.
And there was.
Secured, it's not.
There was an error on the front page. Um, there was a default why been put by a lot of them from a previous year.
The reason why that there was is historically and what we were told is that if it's budgeted, that it is a yes, because it will be in the budget. And I.
I know, I know what you're asking.
Yeah. And, um, I think we are on the same page in that it's not really secure if we don't have the grant. So that was something I'm looking into a little bit. I don't, I don't think that there's any rule that says if it's budgeted, it's a yes, but there are some guidelines that I've started to look into today and I have not finished. So we will, I'll get back to you on that and you'll see it in the final.
Cause we have like, yes, no, we have no, we have yes. Why don't we just have a YF G, you know, if it's budgeted, but we also need a grant.
Yeah. So the yes, no is if it's out future fiscal years. So you'll see the Y for this fiscal year's budget and then the N for, because it's in future fiscal years. So we'll.
And we don't encumber for future.
Hoping to bring something a little bit different back to the final approval.
Sure. No. And I, and I appreciate that. It's a bit of a ping pong because I asked you for that originally. It's just as I communicate with constituents and as I use the tool of the CIP to communicate, it's helpful to have, you, you learn things as you communicate.
And it's what indicate that they are grant, uh, dependent or some part of it is grant money. Cause that can be confused.
And on the next page, it does say.
No, I know it's, it outlines that it's on the grant column.
Yes, it's just not secure.
But yeah, it's not secured. So it's a hopeful. Any other questions on fire? Um, chief, uh, one more question on fire is, um, what, uh, what do you think's the realistic opportunity for, tell me about EMS standup?
Um, yeah, I think realistically it, it's, it's tough because there's a lot of moving parts to make that happen. Y- yes, we need vehicles which we've secured and just about in service. But then to do that efficiently and provide that service, it's going to need to be a 24 seven. So we would have other logistic parts to implement as far as staffing and also where do we put those people, uh, for staffing? So.
It's a broader capital project.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a big project.
We wouldn't do anything part-time, kind of like seaside desk.
Well, no, I, if, if we could, that'd be great. It'd be a good start. Um, and I think that, that, uh, initially we would just end up, um, supporting or contracting with medics and saying, hey, give us your overflow. You know, if you guys are busy, let us take it for you. Um, and to start generating a little bit of funds or revenue. But eventually it would be nice to be able to take care of our EMS with inside the city. Wholeheartedly without having to use any outside resources. So.
Okay.
Yeah, we would need somewhere to, for them to stay, um, to, to.
That'd be like a remodel and then.
Yeah, remodel or, or, you know, a, a, a single wide trailer out of the Hammond station, something temporary. You know, there's all kinds of different options. I know we did a feasibility study, uh, last year or so that talked about, you know, different avenues for the police and fire departments to grow or, you know, what the potential is. So.
Could you have a 12 and 12 unit where they're 12 on 12?
Yeah, it'd probably be 12 or 24s depending on how many staff you could.
Right.
You could pay for. So. But yeah, it's a, it's a lot of moving parts and a lot of pieces to, to make that happen.
Right.
But got to start somewhere and keep the ball rolling.
Um, just as a long range question, do you view getting more paid firefighters as a priority or more paid EMS? We don't have any EMS paid, so.
Yeah. So, uh, if you do paid firefighters, there'd be dual, it'd be both.
Okay.
Uh, their primary job would be EMS and fire, um, depending on what the call is at the time.
Cause our call is mostly an EMS, right?
Yeah, I'd say it's a good 80 to 20% split.
Okay.
Between the two.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions? All right. City manager?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next we're segueing into city hall and admin. Um, so there is a generator for the city hall. This is a emergency backup for our emergency services. Um, our current generator, um, did fail us in 2024. And we've been using a one, we're on loan from Clatskini. They actually have said they want it back sooner rather than later. Um, so we are trying to move forward with this. We, the reason this was not done in this last fiscal year is we thought we were getting a grant, uh, free and clear for a new generator, but unfortunately that funding from OEM fell apart. So, uh, we did have to come back and circle back around about funding. So.
Those are grant can be by?
OEM. Um, originally they said they did have money and, and they do not anymore, unfortunately. So we went through quite a process with them and didn't work out unfortunately, but, um, so here we are. Um, so we do need to get a generator to replace our existing one. Um, the good news is though the existing one is actually oversized for what we currently, um, even if we did do alt-wire all of our circuits, um, so this is a smaller sized generator that will still fulfill all of our needs.
Question though, if we do end up standing up, uh, on EMS service, is there additional like oxygen equipment or something that we need to have that's going to pull a different load?
No, we, we currently have all oxygen that we need, uh, whether we're using it, uh, as a volunteer.
So you don't anticipate any additional power needs that would not be accommodated by.
Nothing large. No, no, not at all.
Um, and, uh, on page six, on page 19, it says city hall generator replacement. And it says renovate, move front counter to current entrance, creating a secure, controlled access to the department.
I think you're looking at building and planning, safety remodel.
It says city hall generator replacement, 59,437 on page 16.
So page 16 is the generator.
Right. The description is to renovate the front counter.
That is, uh, that is incorrect. They, they were using it to get that corrected. That is for a dish, different page, which is the building, um, building and planning department renovation.
Yeah. Uh, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure that, I mean, I, what it, I know that staff said that this was, you know, they had to kind of get this out the door. So is there any other known errors that we know about this? Just so that I don't.
As we go through, unfortunately you may capture a couple more because we did have to get this to you in time for you to review in advance.
Okay.
So we didn't have a final check through unfortunately due to the time constraints.
Um, if we don't catch them, I take it staff's going to review before the final version comes out to us.
We, some staff have reviewed it and still missed it, but we will definitely take another look, sweep through it.
These LNG based.
I'm sorry, what?
LNG. So the generator will run on LNG.
You mean natural?
No, this is a diesel. This is a diesel one. Um, so it is a diesel. Yes. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, no, we don't for city hall because of the emergency one. It's, it's not hardwired to natural gas. It is typically a diesel.
Would be better too.
It depends. Um, sometimes if you're planning for a full on emergency disaster, natural gas often gets disrupted. Um, and this is supposed to ke- keep fire and police running through everything.
But don't you think natural, don't you think that, that diesel would be harder for us to come about, especially since they're going to, you can't get it?
The tank on that is enough. It lasts a very long time. Um, uh, chief could talk to how many days. But for emergency, for the type of scenario we have, typically they don't do natural gas. I've, I've set up a couple of generators for emergency backup and things and, and they usually recommend diesel first over natural gas. I personally like natural gas because you're right, it is hardwired, but if there were an earthquake or something like that, it can be disrupted.
I just know that during the 2007 storm, like the radio stations back then were across the street from the high school. And we had, uh, originally had put in a generator. It was actually, we got on a grant from the, from the, uh, from the army, uh, corp, army corp, corp engineers that who originally supplied that to us. And then during the storm, uh, we had problems when it broke down and they came and redid it, but originally, uh, eventually it had to be replaced and we, it had to be replaced and they, they recommended the time to put it on natural gas.
Mm-hmm.
So of course we didn't continue with, we built over here instead. I know they're on natural gas.
Because as our, ours is kind of a designated for emergency services. They don't often, they don't do natural gas. So.
Yeah. Uh, it depends. It depends on the.
Very earthquake, there won't be a city hall because we'll be flooded soon.
For a mild incident, a north, a natural gas line is much more likely to be disrupted versus a reservoir that's city.
How often do we have to replace the diesel? Cause I know that diesel goes bad. And that if it's a long-term storage, that means a lot of fuel that's to be treated.
Yeah, we haven't had any issues with the generator running out of fuel and I think the longest it's ran in the last couple of years is over two days.
Okay.
And it was down to three quarters of a tank. It's fairly minimal.
So is the fuel not being replaced after, isn't there, is there a time for replacing the fuel in this, the system?
No, we've never had to replace it. It starts up, it runs every Monday for, I think, 30 minutes.
Been in there past five years, even if it has been treated?
Oh, I, I don't think this, the diesel that's in there has been there for five years.
Okay. Well, you're saying like it's been runs two days and it's three quarters of a tank and I'm, it's going to last a long time. I'm.
We haven't maintained it every, every year.
I would say the freshness date on it is maybe less than a year.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we, we do put more diesel in regularly.
Yeah, we, we top it off. If it's a three quarters, we top it off and it gets fresh.
Do we have diesel across the street here or just gas?
Just gas.
No, there, there is diesel there and that is a plan to, oh, I, I'm talking about public works. I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Not at, not at them anymore. Public Works has diesel, yes.
Yeah. And we can get it from them.
Yeah.
Easily. So.
All right.
Wait, sorry. What happened to the OEM grant? So that was from the state?
Yeah. Um, so originally they said we would get it. They had surplus funds as they decide, they, they explained it. Um, this was before all of the shortfalls that we're, we're currently going through, just to make that clear. Um, but for whatever reason, as we went through the process, they took quite a while on it. And then they said, unfortunately, I think they'd expended the monies elsewhere, um, where we thought we were guaranteed, pretty much almost guaranteed. So there was some confusion, I think, on whether we had, we're going to receive it or not. Um, but we went through the full process. Chief did a lot of work on it, submitting our, um, estimates and everything. And then they said, unfortunately, we, they no longer had it. So, um.
I'm just asking, cause, um, it seems like with all the effort that's been to it and $60,000 is not insignificant to our community.
No.
So I don't, I, is there anything that we can do with Weber or?
So currently.
Need to like ask and say like, you, this was money that we went after that was guaranteed.
I think maybe reading between the lines, I believe maybe there were some, um, things that they thought they were going to get more funding in this next fiscal year. But they're about 90% funded by FEMA and FEMA is currently being defunded. And so I think they are now looking at the priorities which were ahead of us. And there's like one or two projects that will spend all the money they currently have. And so that's kind of the, the position we're in. We're like number three in line. And so the money will be gone before they get to us is.
So what, in our budget, what did that generator take the place of that would have been there before?
Uh, it, you know, it's coming from the general fund. So I couldn't tell you, but it is, it is from our general fund budget that we're having to spend on this instead of what we hoped was a grant. But, you know, grants aren't always guaranteed.
Sure.
And we went through the process, but unfortunately it didn't pan out.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Um, so really quickly, we try to update our LED lighting in city hall. We've been working on that for a while now. We're taking it in small chunks. Um, often other projects get priority, but that is in the, in the CIP. We're also the same thing with ethernet ports. We only have one per staff computer. We should have two. Um, and so we're trying to put in more and update wiring in the city hall as we have it. But again, some other priorities often take precedence. Um, our, our front doors, if you haven't noticed, sometimes they're hard to close. Sometimes they don't close correctly. Uh, we do need to replace our main doors throughout city hall. Um, so we do need to start working on that. Um, and this project may be spread over a couple of years based on price. Um, so that is one we're asking for. Um, and then building and planning, this is that, um, default, um, wording that you saw. They have requested and, and we do agree with them. They do want to push out their front counter so that, um, staff and, and their customers are not very uncomfortably put smack dab in the middle of, of the building and planning, um, area. They have had some fairly scary interactions with the public where they've had to ask people to leave, um, had to ask the police to come over and escort people out. Um, and so we do think having a counter where they can have people interact without, with a buffer between. Um, they will have a, I think a bulletproof glass, but they may be able to raise or lower that as needed is my understanding. Um, but they want to feel safer and I agree with them that that is needed. This will also maximize the space back there. Um, we will better configure it so they can better have a use of their space. Um, so that is, um, one request that we would like to, we may actually get some of this done this fiscal year. Uh, we are currently in design phase of this and, but we did want to capture this in the next fiscal year in case we don't get it all out to bid. Um, before the fiscal year ends. Any questions on that one? And then we do have, um, the Hammond planting strip upgrade. I think one last year on that at least, uh, we still need about 10, um, flowering crab apples. They never go as far as I hope they will. Um, and we do need to put more fencing around some of the existing crab apples. And then we have been trying to do mass plantings of daffodils out there. Um, it is a pretty massive planting area.
I will say though, that the first stretch in the Hammond with the daffodils looks great. If that is the, if that is the, you know, progenitor of the rest of it, that, that, that's really nice.
And, and unfortunately we have had, we originally had some, um, volunteers help, but some of the timing and rain in the last couple of times, we have had to hire people to help plant. Um, but we have some really nice crab apples. We get from a, um, it's a local fisherman. They are out in Boring, Oregon. We go and get them. But, um, I think they'll do really well in that planting strip for the years to come. So, um, and we are trying to match the colors. I know there was a difference in colors of them, but we're trying to get the same colors throughout. So that is that. Um, and we're trying to get that done. And then it, uh, goes into Quincy Robinson. Um, so there is the pickleball tennis court rebuild. I know there was conversation about that. It is intended to be half striped tennis, half striped pickleball tennis. If that works, um, but it is unfortunately a pretty significant rebuild. Um, it is, it has sunk, it, it sank in the first two years after it was done. So it is a full resurface and with engineering and everything, the amounts we're looking at is getting to be pretty significant.
You're talking about subgrade too, though. You're not just talking about resurface, right?
Yes, it is a, it is a full.
Needs a new subgrade.
Yes, it is not just a resurface. Yep. Um, and then this is a carryover for security lighting. Um, this has been a project we've been intending to do. Unfortunately has not been our highest priority, but it is, um, one we hope to do in the near future.
So for, um, Quincy Robinson, the nets and everything, those are replaced too. I'm assuming with.
Uh, I, yeah. So there is, for example, some damage to the, there's a bullpen and some, um, uh, fencing and some other stuff that'll be part of this. We've been holding off on it because we want to do the, the full underlay first. But yeah, there's, there's a full refresh that needs to happen there.
And then that's maintained by public works, parks. Yeah. Okay.
Let the record reflect, um, Commissioner Mitchell had to leave for his day job. So an instant excused absence.
Yeah. And then the other, um, Quincy Robinson is the waterfront trail that, um, it's outside of Quincy Robinson Park. But there, um, they can do parks that are, they can do things that are for the betterment of all of city of Moreton. And so that is one that has been, um, put it forward to, to, uh, keep developing our trail system.
What do we expect to accomplish for that 50,000?
I think that would probably be, uh, the start of the design and then also hopefully to start getting either whether it's easements or other things needed. Um, that would be the start of the process. Yeah. Some improvements hopefully as well.
And then when you have other grants in here, what are the other grant sources?
So there are some trails that will do it. We, I, we don't currently have them, but I know there are trail grants and, and others that we might be able to capture.
Yeah.
Um, for example, there's even the, um, Class of County Coalition. Sometimes they have some grants for things like this. That might be a possibility for a little grant.
I know Archterix has an outdoor grant of, to 15,000. Um, and then if Spruce Up can help access any funding for grants.
Yes, we, we haven't pursued any of this last year. This one has kind of been low on the priority list, but hopefully.
For outdoor recreation.
When we get more time. Yeah. Um, I think that's for Quincy Robinson. That's it. But I did want to mention, um, for parks, or I'm sorry, one more from Quincy is the Crowthers viewing dock. Um, so we may have, it's so hard sometimes with the city agreements from the past, especially when they were in Hammond. Um, we do believe that there was a prior agreement with the railroad company for, um, use of their, um, adjoining to the Crowthers viewing dock. We're just trying to dig up that agreement before we can develop this. So we've been trying to get this project moving forward for a couple of years, but haven't been unable to find the agreement. I didn't even know it existed in a couple, until a couple of months ago.
Verbal, but it does exist.
I believe there is. There is mentioned, there is a referral to it in some minutes from about 10, 15 years ago. So I'm trying to track that down. Um, so if I can find it, then we can build it.
And this is the dock with the fence on it now?
It currently says not, you know, for safety, it is closed down.
If you walk out, Crowther's Park all the way to the wire, it's the first thing you see. It's an old platform. It's wooden.
Yeah. Uh, we would love to rebuild it, but unfortunately part of it's on. Uh, we would love to rebuild it, but unfortunately, part of it's on the railroad and we've gotten into. I've reached out to them many times, but it's very complicated and they want us to pay for using their whole land um, to rebuild this, so, yeah. So that is Quincy Robinson. And then I think we're gonna move into Public Works. Is that correct? Or Tansy Point first, I'm sorry. There is just the one Tansy Point that is the dock anodes. We are pivoting a different direction with that, with the Nygards. Um, we're very close to replacement of those. I don't believe it'll cost this full amount, um, but we should be doing this in the next fiscal year.
So here's the other question I have. Okay, I know that we got cap reserves that go into basically anode replacement. And the anodes are expensive, but. You know, if you ever go there at low tide. That pile dike doesn't look all that great all the time. And I guess my question is, to what degree are we budgeting? For or who is responsible for, based on the rental agreement, if that pile dike? Or not pile dike, sorry, the sheet piles that are the the bulkhead, you know, that keeps that all in place. If those fail. Uh, is that insured? It, you know, what, how how do we deal with that? Cause you know, permitting is gonna be a lot and then those aren't, those are expensive to.
So the agreement for maintenance, some of that is up to the Tansy Point renters. Um, and they have recently inspected both the anodes and some of that sheet pile. And and it was still good. Um, so we do request or require that they do some periodic inspections.
But it's not gonna be good forever, cause you know, does corrode no matter what you put on it or not. So I guess my question is. If the sheet pile fails and it's not for lack of the tenants, you know, uh, maintenance. Is that insu- do we have that insured to replace that? Or are we gonna be draining every last reserve dollar to fix? Something that big?
I don't, is it listed in our assets?
I am not sure. I'd have to look at that. I was thinking about when our other docks fail, those are not insured.
But docks are a little different than a bulk.
Yeah, I'm not, we'll have to look into that and get you an answer on that.
I would have to dig into the Nygaard agreement.
My question is less to uh, satisfy curiosity as much as to make sure that our cap reserves are. Say, for example, okay, we take the, we, if if we're taking the additional from the the lease and we're putting into fire apparatus, which I agree we should do. But we also gotta make sure that we're not rating more than, if there's, there's a delta between that ten percent and that additional that's going to fire apparatus. That we're just draining into the general fund. I understand that those are necessary for keeping a very limited general fund budget alive. But if we don't have that insured, we need to figure out to put some money away so that we can replace that or completely fix it should something fail. Because that would be a major problem. And a liability for us if we ended up being responsible for. So that's, that's the only reason why I'm asking the question. Cause I know that this is something the commission's been talked about, about, you know. That the cathodic uh, erosion of that dock has. Not been even, so to speak, so. All right.
Now Public Works? And do you wanna start with water?
Yeah, I believe so. Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this is my first time through our budget process, so please give me mercy and uh, I'm gonna look to my um, colleagues here. For some assistance from time to time. But the first item we have here is the sodium hypochlorite tank cell replacement. This is in our water treatment facility. And we're proposing to uh, replace the electrical cell unit that creates the disinfection there.
Now, is this, is this what we consider chlorine, basically?
Correct. Can we just move on to the next? All right, thank you. All right, the next one on the list is uh, replace raw water pipe upstream for raw water reservoir RP two. Uh, this is uh, project that's actively in process where uh, went out for bids for this and we should get those costs back here shortly.
Um, in terms of uh. Have we started, just curious, this is more related to um, transmission than it is to the rest, but. Uh, are we? Do we have any type of estimates on what the hit would be or what would be the benefits of gear heart disconnecting from the system? Only reason why I ask that question, cause I've been approached. And it suggested that they might disconnect.
So the answer is for for funding, receiving revenue. Um, in the short term, we actually appreciate the revenues. And if you remember, we actually doubled it last year for the first time. Um, so selling water currently for the city is in our best interest. We don't currently need that water. Other than there is a moratorium outside our city limits, but I think that's also due to maintenance questions. So it's not necessarily that we would wanna sell that water out there unless a district was formed. So the short-term answer is, it's not necessarily an immediate benefit to us to disconnect them. In the long term, however, say, for example, if we don't get another wa- raw water reservoir, there may come a time where we say, thank you. It's been great doing business with you, your heart. And I'm talking five, ten years out at a minimum. We may say we wanna use that water for ourselves. Um, but at this point, it is not a a need for us to disconnect them. It is more gear heart is trying to pursue their own water. Uh, because they are currently actively building and then also they kind of have in the summer months where they encourage all of their folks to conserve.
Okay, I, the only reason I ask is cause I've been hearing that they're talking about disconnect.
They have talked about that.
They've been doing that for several years now, so.
Uh, ten, fifteen years, yeah.
Any questions related to the raw water pipe upstream for RP two or RP three? Hammond Waterline.
All right.
It's happening, right? It's actually happening.
It it is. And just for clarification, we are, we did skip over RP three, did you? Yes, Hammond Waterline is happening. Um, gosh, I can't remember exactly where we're at with that project. I think we should.
So this is the first phase, phase one, as you call it. And that is currently going to the commission for phase one for the approval to go out for bid for phase one. We actually did some of the design already, so I think this may be the start of construction phase unless I'm incorrect. Um, but um, it is for the the Hammond Waterline.
Yeah, I wanna say we just, we just came to uh, commission to approve the design contract for it.
Okay, and it might be the, it might have been originally a thirty percent. Now you're getting to final design, yeah. But we're getting very, very much closer than you have been for the last five years. So, yep.
All right, next is uh, North Main Avenue and Northwest Seventh Place. Um, this is to replace a asbestos concrete water line and repair the uh, the street there. And this project, um, it's split up into a few different budgets here, so that you'll see this again on the streets. And essentially where it's at is we've got a contract for initial concept and cost estimate. And that is in process. It should be coming before the commission here and I'd say in the next month or so. And that's to make a decide, decision on where the sidewalks go and kind of how the streets lay down.
Remember, I, we talked about how the sidewalks probably weren't gonna be on both sides, but maybe one side and then maybe exempting like North Main from sidewalks. Because there's a trail right on their side of it. That was part of the discussion we had. Um, but um, so this, this one point six five, you know, one point six million is for um. Not just the water line, but also because we've already been in sewer there. Uh, that's for also the additional road subbase and. We actually think one point six is gonna do that?
Well, this isn't, the street is in a separate, streets are in a different. All right, so yes, this is the totality which includes a street portion you'll see later.
Cause number forty-one includes both, right? But we think, do we, you, I mean, have you taken a look at this? Do you reasonably think that today's dollars that one point six is gonna cover? Ripping out that road, redoing the subbase, throwing in a water line. That seems a little light for that. I'm just curious.
I would say, yeah, that's probably an underestimate. It's uh, I think really dependent on what the commission decides on the direction for the street design. Hopefully you'll get a few options to decide with some, some, some variances in cost from, you know, good, better, best. Um, but yeah, I would say that's a little cheap for the amount of road and the amount of pipeline that's gotta go in there. I think it's approximately. Three thousand feet.
What's the average price per foot for this type of project?
Uh, I don't know in this area, I'm not sure. I believe it's HDP.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we did recently do safe routes, but keep in mind that's ODOT and a lot more permitting. Um, but the one point six or one point eight million took us about a block, but there were a lot more permits, a lot more to the process, so. I would hope to get at least two blocks, but.
And this, the budget for this or the CIP for this year is just for design, I believe. And so hopefully we'll have a better estimate on cost.
We'll come back with better.
In future CIPs.
All right, moving on to water reservoir at the water treatment plant. It's a new water reservoir at the water treatment plant. Expand capacity. And I don't really have too much information on this one.
We are currently in feasibility stage on this one, um, to see whether it would be a raw water or an aquifer or a water. What do you call the ones above ground? A tank, um, which would bump the price significantly, but we're looking at all the options currently. So hopefully by the end of this year, we'll come back to you with that updated feasibility plan.
On the um, I mean, you got the tank painting, which I think's been on the CIP for some time. Uh, the Ridge Road eighteen inch water main, Pacific Gateway, that's the loop what's exactly at, that's supposed to be the loop what we're gonna build. Hammond into what, four-point footing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's just the looping section. And then uh. Fourth Street. Planning on doing water rates on Fourth Street for seven thousand dollars?
So this is that one um, that is a small section that has come up regularly. It is a very deteriorated road.
Right, that's for water?
Yes, this is the water portion.
And uh, cause I remember we canceled that project partially because of the, we couldn't make the sidewalks work and the road alignment on Fourth Street. That was gonna be an urban project, you remember that?
Yeah.
Maddox and the parking, the whole, the whole. So is, are we still a go for that now?
I think this was brought up at last year's CIP that it was one that you wanted us to continue to pursue. And I apologize if I don't remember all the details, but it did come up at last year's um, CIP conversation, I believe. Um, and it was one that you did want us to take a look at ag- again.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it was for infrastructure improvement, right? Remember, we weren't gonna redo the road.
I think it might have been more of the infrastructure, yeah. Which this is the water portion.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Any other projects you wanna highlight?
Uh, not particularly in the, not particularly in the uh, the water section, no.
You can move to sewer if you'd like. And that starts on page fifty-two.
At the first one we have is uh, Seventh and Enterprise Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Update. Um, I don't have a lot of information on this either, but I have been uh, visiting pump stations and they are very old. Um, I actually, I did visit this one. Um, and this was one that that gives crews a lot of issues. Mostly because you can't buy parts for it anymore. It was made in the fifties, so.
I thought we had decided on a policy of buying common pumps or all that. And so they should be something that we should be readily adding in stock, both parts and spare pumps. And is this just one that just hasn't been upgraded or have we not upgraded any of them or how many are these or?
We're working through our entire system and there's what, thirty-two of them. It's gonna take some time. Um, so this is one of the ones that's starting to fail that is older. Um, so this is kind of the priority list. This is the next one on the list. There's also another one, but of the two, this is the one I think that's leaking or failing the fastest. So this is the next, but you will see these coming up over the next multiple years because we have literally so many pump stations. And some are more expensive than others. This is one of the more expensive ones, I believe.
And we had one where we didn't have anything to protect in case a car ran into it. I think it's one on.
For the ballards?
Yeah. And are we doing that with all the new ones? So we even have the the cement things or the uh, metal posts go up with cement?
We should if they're near the street. Yeah, we should be doing that as a standard that there is something to prevent cars running into them.
And drunks look at a thing and they hit what they look at.
The uh. Seventh and Enterprise has a lot of water intrusion. Have, I know we did six years ago, uh, camera a bunch of the sewer lines for inflow and filtration. Do you know if we have any idea of if we're getting I N I in that area still?
We fixed some of the I N I. I'm not sure if this is the particular one.
I know we did a lot of I N I fixes in Maine.
Yeah, I I couldn't off the top of my head tell you if it was one, this was one of those or not, yeah.
Well, we've got the uh, King Avenue Sanitary Sewer lateral installations. Um, you wanna talk about that?
Can I take this one?
Yes, please.
I would like to respectfully request that the commission uh, consider whether you want this in the near future or pushed out a couple of years. Um, this would take from your capital reserve project, your wastewater treatment plant, which is thirty-five million dollars. Um, so you'll see a couple of projects come up. The question is when to do them. So if you remember, uh, there was a request for an uh. Eight, advanced financing that was not approved. Um, some of the neighbors still want this. Some of them very loudly said at the commission meeting, they do not. Um, there are two laterals that are currently there that two of the people can connect to. There are five others that previously there was an intent to put laterals to them. So there's currently no laterals to those properties. Some of those people have said they do not want this right away. Uh, given your current budget demands for a new wastewater treatment plant. I would respectfully recommend you push it out past when that is being built. Because every dollar towards your wastewater treatment plant is gonna be money well spent. Because that is the big push right now to get the full thirty-five million to build that out. But that is up to you. My my suggestion would be to put it at the earliest in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Um, I would also say that. I would think it would be, I mean, the cost will change by that time.
It will.
It would be reasonable to s- uh, within at least a year prior to the project commencement. Um, that we reach out to them and suggest a. I'm not saying that it would be the, cause we know that those costs are greater than what everyone was expecting to have to pay to connect. Of course, the cost of connecting general is just a lot more than it was. But I would think that the property owner should have some sort of tie-in onto that, not just a complete city. Do, so to speak on that, similar to, there was a LID, so to speak. I'm not saying it doesn't necessarily finance it like an LID, but I'm just saying that there probably should be a cost incurred that we don't completely pay for the whole thing. Cause I think if we do, that's a little bit more problematic when there was already a, there was already a willingness to pay for some of this. And the city, in my opinion, needs to be careful about offering the precedent of just doing everybody's sewer connections. Because that, that can be a little bit more problematic for future projects, if that makes any sense. Now, I know that North Main and Seventh. Uh, we were supposed to put in all those laterals and have that ready to go. We were supposed to have them connect to it and give them the option, but we never communicated the option to connect when we put sewer line in. According to the residents, don't. So that's its own little ball box, but I think for this, uh, sounds like the commission's fine with delaying, but I also think that there's probably a little bit of buying there. Connect, cause they have a new, I think we talked about this, if they wanna have, if they have a new subject system, you know, doesn't make sense to make them, force them to connect on a new subject system that they bought last year. Um, as well, so. Kick that to twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yeah, I would just suggest communicating with the property owners in that area the decision so that they feel like they're in the know, because it felt like last time. Yeah, a lot.
Well, the hardest thing is capturing three years from now. A statement saying, okay, remember to go out to the, you know, it is hard because. The city could do better with some of our our capital improvement projects and informing the neighbors. But at the same time, is there a duty to always inform them? It's really hard when there's turnover of staff and there's not a collective memory on some of those things that are stated. Um, it's really hard to put a pin in that and calendar it out when it's not the same person necessarily.
Kind of throws into the description of the CIP that the city is, will communicate a year in advance of the project. If we wanna make that note, we can put it in the official block. Cause that'll survive any staff, staff turn up here as well. I mean, I don't know if anybody thinks this is that idea, but.
Makes sense and it gets done.
Yeah, and then it'll remind us during these conversations to make sure that we know what's going on, so we can talk to people.
We forget too.
We can try to make a note in there. I don't think that's typical in a CIP document, but.
I recognize it.
We can.
But I think, I think the pain that's incurred from forgetting, it's worthwhile to make an exception to the uh, standard practice. All right, excellent.
All right, next one is uh, MBR, the fourth uh, ultraviolet disinfection module. This is for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, basically, we've been getting close to our limits for DQ. I can't remember the, the actual term for what it is, but. Um, this is one of, one of the additions, sorry. We have three UV modules out there right now, adding a fourth to keep us under that limit. Uh, and this would also tie into the. The new wastewater treatment plant because uh, the disinfection modules are gonna remain with um, with the new plan.
If I remember when we took a tour. I thought the old modules were not. Like you couldn't really upgrade it. They were like, I didn't. Like you couldn't really upgrade it, they were like added here, it was the control.
It was the.
Unfortunately, it's it will not sync with the new one, so that eighty thousand we recently had to pay, which we're still waiting for that to arrive. Is it's just a sunk cost, but it is an immediate requirement by T.
But this new one will have a set control panel?
No, so these, this is just the actual U V array themselves, this is not the control panel, you can re reuse this array. It doesn't take the entirety of the system with it.
Compatible with other control.
Yes, yes, we can reuse it, our um Kennedy Jenks has said we can use this fourth array and.
Okay.
The existing three in the new in the new system. And it is the final in the membrane treatment, it's it's almost like a standalone, but it's that final pass through as it gets through to kill those last few E cup coli and other things. So.
That's a fascinating facility, that part.
Yeah.
So.
It is.
Moving on.
Uh the next one is the wastewater treatment plant, Headworks Parallel Fine Screen Project, and that's uh. I believe the Headworks is kind of the pre-filter to to get some of the sand and grid out of the the system.
They're spending forty thousand dollars for something that may be eliminated, the pending project.
This one.
What it says in the project details. Remove bar screen from bypass channels, qualifying screen, no maybe eliminated giving.
It will depend, we will definitely review this before we install it. I'm not confident that we will remove it because there is gonna need to be some pretreatment before things hit the membrane. Um so it may be still used, but stay tuned, um because if we can use it in the new one, we will install it.
This is the facility that's the first thing on the left when you get in, right?
Correct.
Alright, excellent.
Next is wastewater treatment plant, North Lagoon Dewatering Pump and Filter. And this is um. This is, I believe this is the, so we have the the lagoon where all the biosolids kind of go to to settle down and and stay. And then this would uh take the the clear water on top and filter it through the wastewater treatment plant, is that correct?
So it actually, this this has sat there enough that it can actually be um pumping the collected rainwater. And instead of decommissioning the lagoon, so it's actually a a good thing that we're just taking rainwater from the lagoon directly through the U V system. And it's not going through our wastewater, so we're not having to process it again.
But we're also in the next C I P doing sub-biosolids removal, which isn't that essentially decommissioning the lagoon?
It's a separate, it's a separate one, this, the biosolids one is a separate lagoon.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. What, there's one full of poop and there's one that's full of rainwater, that's the best way to put it.
Okay. Alright, and then that goes to the next one, and the new membrane treatment plant expansion is thirty five mil, I think we're all pretty familiar with that one. And uh. Pump station at Alder and Harbor and Heron, it's just another pump station. Any other questions for any of the other sewer C I P? Gonna move on to the next department?
You're moving faster than I am.
They scroll down.
Water, then wastewater, we can do sanitation or we can do uh.
I think sanitation is next in the.
Yeah.
And storm.
In the document, right? Or did I skip?
Sanitation is next, and I do wanna call it out because you skimmed right over it, but we did put the thirty five million dollar. Wastewater treatment plan in here, which I think is worth noting since it is a major project and we are putting them all in there as. The one project versus individual C I Ps for the process, so for a lot of them going forward. Uh sanitation.
Next for sanitation is a storage facility, I believe the storage facility might actually be located at the new water wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna be.
We're seeing if there's space there, um some of that question might be, as you know, that is out to twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. Um the new membrane is actually using some of the same footprint. And um some of it, I think we may be able to use better and this may be an option out there. It also might be depending, we still don't know if we may have the co um bio plant that's not ours. Yep, uh but if we don't have that, then absolutely this could go out there, there would be room, so.
So um I also noticed that sanitation has no funding source totals. Whether it's coming from cap reserve, S D C debt grants, capital contributions on page three. So I'm assuming the sanitation storage facility and the truck washouts probably gonna be cap reserve?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's not here though.
Yeah.
On page three.
Uh sorry, that's because it's all future fiscal years, so there's, it's blank because there's.
It's not.
No funding this fiscal year.
Okay. Alright, next to streets.
Alright. Uh the first project up is uh viewpoint erosion control, this is Seafarers Park, that was actually, that came to commission to go. Let's see, where am I at today, that was to go out to. Yeah, bid for design, actually, yeah.
Wait, the the thing we just, the contract we approved was only design, I thought that was the fix.
The ninety five thousand was the design, um there was budgeted in this last fiscal year. Um for a total of three fifty, so ninety five of that was the design. Um so for this next fiscal year, we do anticipate further um erosion control cuz that's just a section of it. Uh but also, we we are carrying over because I, by the time we go out to bid, most likely it'll be in July or August.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the contract we just approved for ninety five, which. I believe I asked on the record, that was gonna be sufficient to fix the problem.
We said that was design, that is the design only, and that was stated on the record. So the.
So we are not fixing the erosion at?
No, we are. Uh so as was stated on the record, there was a total last year budgeted for three hundred and fifty thousand. And so ninety five of that was for bid for design and the remainder of that, which we actually had to. Um shrink back a little last fiscal year, total of two hundred and fifty thousand last fiscal year was anticipated to repair. But that said, there is still beyond the viewpoint to the east, more erosion control that needs to be done, so. This, if if there is a carryover from this last fiscal year, we have to budget.
So actual erosion control happening next fiscal year?
Most likely, yes.
Thank you, that answers the point. Alright, then we got, well, wayfinding signs, which I think that's been on there for a while.
And we are almost wrapped up with that project, but we did put some in here, the signs are actually waiting to be installed. Uh this amount is for any um signs that are not correct that need to be fixed, just in case. I think they're all correct, but you never know till you put them up, and then we also need to get new posts for all of them as well and some cement to install them, so. Um that is the final phase of that.
We got the City Park Crosswalk, we've got. Uh is there any, is there any notes uh from on the streets that anybody wants to talk about, I guess?
I have some questions about the.
Go for it.
The bike lanes and. I know there's like a variation, we can have like a stripe on a road versus like actual reflections versus like, there's different gradients, I guess. So what is the level of protection for cyclists, cuz especially on Ridge? It's a little.
So Ridge Road is not ours.
Well, I thought there's, or is it Ninth?
This is Ninth, this is the run that goes to the Graceville Pass uh up to Ridge Road, connecting South Main to Ridge Road. It's very narrow.
So what do we think, what does that look like?
So the challenge is, when you go across there, there's not a lot of room to widen the sidewalk. In a lot of the spaces, a lot of it's actually private property as you traverse it. Um we actually, I think that was with the interim, sorry Kevin, it was with the interim public works director, I I went and looked at this project as we were putting this together. Um option A to widen the sidewalk to ten feet, there's actually not space in some areas because it is private property, we're not sure we'd get easements the whole way. What we're we're actually requesting is it might be more like. Along the side as you go out Ninth past the school and everything heading west. It more, may look more like a multi-use gravel trail if they will allow that much easement. But I think some of these property owners probably will not allow an easement, and there is also a challenge with some of it being the former dump. I'm not sure we can do a lot of infrastructure upgrades like sidewalk there, so there's some challenges along Ninth. I think when they first put this project together that they were unaware of.
I'm.
The ideal would be to have sidewalk the whole way.
I mean, I'm off, I'm absolutely off for more active transit options, but also like encouraging active transit where it's not safe for people to do so is a huge concern.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I think we need to strike a right balance there.
The existing road, the hope would be next to the road itself, there would be a path that is not on the road itself, whether that's gravel. Or if we can do some improvements of sidewalk, this is the option B that's discussed in here.
Okay.
The hope is that it's taking people off the road onto a trail next to it, so it is safer.
Do we need to do like a public campaign to get people bought into this idea, or like how can we make sure that it moves forward in a way that?
To one Ninth Street?
Yeah, with some property owners that might be hesitant, like.
Um well, I think Ninth Street's a lot larger than even the city manager's talking, the wetland problem.
Yeah.
The drainage problem.
There's something that we simply can't touch, yeah.
For for some pedestrian, for for pedestrian connectivity to that area. Uh I'm gonna just guess off the, just thinking of other projects that have gone through wetlands like that, you're. You're probably talking a couple mil, just to connect that. And um I'll be honest with you, I think lighting would do more in that area than probably any roadway expansion. It's just to make sure that people are available cuz it's very dark.
Mm-hmm.
But um I know some of this too is trying to get so that kids can get through that section to home, which is usually up Juniper or. Uh across, uh I don't know to what degree that is gonna still remain relevant when the school moves. To the master campus, which is gonna be across there, um if that's gonna change the game to the kids walking versus taking a bus. Uh so uh. I I I think that this project's uh, it's gonna be a a minimum to what we can do without having to completely. Be building bridges to essentially nowhere.
Second Street's gonna be extended. Uh to go to Juniper.
Well, I think that probably got canceled too for wetlands, didn't it?
There's some issues with wetlands, yeah.
Yeah, a bit more significant than we anticipated, so. You know, unless we've got tons of mitigation lands to go burn on that, which I don't think we will.
I have seen, you know, that is kind of a dangerous little area, I've seen people in there a lot, and I have seen places where. At the beginning of that walkway, you can have a flashing light, where if you're gonna walk down through there, you can punch the button, you got a flashing light, it's, you know. Slows people down, let lets people know that you're walking through there, you're there, you'd have that on either end, that might be a little more. Inexpensive way to, I don't know if we could put a sign like that there or not, it's not state, it's our city street, so. But I have seen that in areas where it's a little dangerous, where you can push a button on one end, kinda like a crosswalk.
Bridges and other places, yeah.
Um just a thought.
That's actually a really good thought, Commissioner Poe, um because I think that achieves.
And I've driven through there when people have been in there and it's kids walking from the school and it is, it is quite skinny and. But you could have reduced, you could say you have reduced speed if the flashing light's gone and.
Yeah, the only challenge with the flashing light is how long that entire distance is, because it's usually timed.
Yeah.
And the flashing light would probably stop before they'd made it the whole way.
Just gotta go walk it and get the time on it. Just like a school light, but you know, I would also say too, though, if you're talking about pedestrian improvements, the number one place that we should be doing pedestrian improvements other than safe for us to school now would be Harbor. Because people have actually been hit on Harbor. And we already have some designing stuff.
And they go in the ditch on Harbor too, in their in their little scooters and.
So, but anyways, yeah, that's that's the Ninth Street.
But it might be an inexpensive way just to let people know you've got walkers through there.
Make a note to review potential, if it was lighting, it probably would have to be solar powered, but looking at solar powered lights or some kind of flashing. It might be an option out there, so we'll take a look at that.
They're just like two hundred yards there, that's kinda skinny and long, low.
Um Complete Streets Network also might have some ideas and funding sources too.
Alright.
Just I don't forget, and this isn't with Ninth Street, I heard that skipping on bridges getting replaced, are they putting sidewalks, widen it, or do you know?
I think it's just repair of existing.
They're basically, they're, no.
Yeah.
Just too bad, cuz that's, we can actually.
So um so yeah, I guess uh for the record, we're basically putting a pin in the Ninth Street project, so to speak, for pending or for the review, if that makes any sense.
Well, and it was out.
Couple of years.
A couple of years as well, so it'll be coming back around in in previous.
And you said, uh like uh page eighty four, that project's dead?
Eighty four.
Southwest Second Streets.
Oh, Second Street, um well, my understanding is that uh county and N C L C didn't wanna go forward with mitigation, correct? Or are we doing that? Good question, Commissioners, also.
I cannot remember um whether they wanted to partner with us, I have, I have a memory that there was something about that where they were not interested. But I will circle back around on that one, um because we do still have it as design phase for this next fiscal year.
Yeah, it's not spend money on design if we know we're not gonna get the partners to build. So, but if we do, then we probably. I I have a few people that I know are gonna come to Mayor's Coffee, they're not gonna be happy about that. So, um. Alright, moving on to the Fourth Street, um so this one uh says improve South Coast Forestry between South Main and Alder Court and add a sidewalk. Replace five hundred linear feet of undersized waterline with new eight inch main.
Page you on?
Uh this is page eighty six.
And this is the same project that we briefly talked about.
Yes.
In the water fund.
Yeah, I, and maybe my memory's off here, but I'm pretty certain Commissioner Guy reminded me if I was wrong, I think you were here too, uh Poe at the time. Where we basically said, we couldn't get the parking to work, people were.
Yeah.
With the sidewalks. And so we said no sidewalks and just, we're not gonna spend it.
And uh one, the one uh apartment, that full-sized truck would stick out in the road.
That's right, so I think, I don't, I don't, I don't think we weren't necessarily opposed to the road getting improved, just not with urban renewal. But I think a sidewalk was not supposed to be on the, I can't remember if it was still, I would have to go back on the record, but I don't. I know there was a discussion about that, cuz when we looked at the design, oh, that was a great, still the city engineer. It just didn't, it didn't, everyone was angry about the whole design, I guess, and it was like, well, if nobody really wants it, then we're just gonna. Throw hands up on it, but um it, I think it was to talk about just a right roadway with a more defined pathway to walk, so to speak. Um versus putting in the curb. Um I think there was also some stormwater issues there as well. Anyways, just making you know that. Any other questions on streets? You wanna move on to the next one?
Sure, next is uh Storm Sewer. And the first up here is uh Southeast Second Culvers, this is culverts, this is installing six uh culverts along some driveways on Southeast Second. Next is West Hammond Work, the Iredale Culvert, um this project is in design, looks like we're going up. That's a bit on that sooner, we have already.
And this is earmarked um funding that we have received, yeah.
Then next is O N M and Alder Monitoring, I don't have any information on this one, unfortunately.
Mm-hmm, uh this was a discussion um regarding whether there would be a feasibility of a pump station needed here. Um so this came up in the last year or so, and so there was a feasibility study recommended, which is what what is proposed.
Now, I got a question related to that, cuz and. Correct me if I'm wrong, cuz my brain's a little jumbled, two thousand pages we've got for tomorrow. Um. If I recall correctly, when we had the presentation on the uh interior drainage study.
Yeah.
They said that um a pump station probably wasn't something that they recommended, wasn't it?
They actually said they didn't necessarily agree it was needed.
Okay.
Um they said a pump station, unless you basically drained it in the morning before you knew the storm was coming type of thing, and then.
They probably could do.
Think I remember that conversation.
The whole conversation about you actually would not keep up with it anyway, and you'd just be overworking a pump station.
Unless it was completely dry in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's not necessarily, I mean, it says feasibility of a pump station, I think it's more better. Uh described as a stormwater and drainage feasibility of what should be done in this area.
So are you saying more like a C I P, or was it that we were talking about for um? There was, read my mind, no, I was kidding, uh there was, there is a, we we talked about this, um it was on the urban renewal.
For the interior drainage?
Yes, interior drainage, it was like for one specific portion.
There was.
More like what we should be doing for this instead?
Um.
An interior, you like a, you know, an interior drainage plant.
I think that the benefits listed are correct in this, you know, the intent is to reduce flooding and provide better drainage. Now, whether that's a pump station, um it's some sort of, you know, tidal and stormwater review. Um so it doesn't hurt to say review of a pump station for lack of a better term, cuz we don't wanna make it so broad, we're looking at every single. You know, thing that drains into Alder Creek and suddenly it's more about how do we best um make sure it doesn't flood. Into the outside of what is the Alder Creek area. And so I think a a study, if you will, it could be looking at whether it's a pump station or other. Um would be most appropriate there, so I don't mind keeping it as pump station because most likely if they agree with the engineer, but they may come back and they may say. A pump station not directly in Alder Creek, but at this location for other. It's not necessarily in there, but outside of it is where there's a known flooding location, that might be where the pump station is located. And so I don't think you would necessarily wanna exclude that.
Gotcha, so I mean, and and O N M plan would.
And trust me, I don't want more pump stations because we have to keep replacing them all.
Yeah, I I know like an O N M plan would probably address uh like, you know, dredging of the headwaters like where you're talking about, which you've mentioned, and I think also. Um uh. There's, there's a beaver dam up that creek as well, before you get to Gardenia, so. Alright, cool, alright, I just, that answers my question. Let's go on the tiegate replacement program. Which tiegates are next?
That is a great question, I know. That is a great question. I know the one at the airport was recently replaced um thanks to the the port. Um I do know the city has a list of which ones should be touched next. I can't remember which of, there were two that were the next ones to look at. I honestly, I apologize, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I know there's still two or three at Alder Creek that stay open, cuz they didn't, I don't think we ever replaced them because I think we were supposedly we had at one point ripped them off and then we were sent them to some place in Boston to be recast, but then that didn't work out, so I think they stayed on there or they removed them.
I think the Hammond one's gonna be replaced with the big uh Iredale project.
There is gonna be a, they're calling it a um, they're calling it that, but it's, I call it like a valve. It's like an Yeah, it's not what I think of when you say tide gate, but they are replacing that as part of that.
Closes with pressure, opens with pressure.
Alright, and then.
Oh, then we have a uh stormwater master plan update. Uh this is gonna be a phase one project.
It's definitely needed.
It is, an overdue.
Uh it's Southwest Fourth Street after that. And here's another question, stormwater master plan update phase one. Is there a reason why we're not trying to push that up to this next fiscal year?
Because we were focused on some other projects, I I did request that we wait. Um because I want it to have the full attention it deserves. I think pushing it out a year is reasonable. I mean, would I love to have done it, start it yesterday, absolutely, but can it wait one more year? Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, we have the Fourth Street um stormwater improvements, which is needed. You got Alder Third to Second. If I remember, isn't that the issue that came before us two or three years ago? I think it was the Gramson incident where the planning commission issued a fine, anything for that illegal fill? Was that the location? Alder from the South and Third Second. Anyways. Do you have anything to talk about that?
No.
Okay. City Manager, can you speak to that at all?
I, I'm trying to think of where there was fill. I mean, there's, there's a a creation of a pond.
Across from the apartments and the other side off on, I think it was First, actually.
Is it First and Second? Right here, this corner?
Uh it's just, actually, it's right here. Yeah, yeah, so it's listed, never mind, okay.
Yeah, I don't know of anything in this area that was specific to that.
Yeah, okay. Hey, questions moving on, Southwest Pine, Street Repair Drainage. I think that was, been, we talked about that last year, I think the year before, I think when some people came for us.
Yeah.
Oh, at First to West Harbor, yeah, that's the one I came up with. Upside Storm System, Hammond Marina. Fourth Lake Jettie Improvement Project. So tell me more about uh how we're gonna improve stormwater at Lake Jettie. That's on page uh one oh four.
Yeah, I think this is part of the um, well, we need, we need engineering done, but I think um some catch basins if possible. Um if we can get those in there would would help.
Okay.
Cuz it's also flat in that area. I think that's the hope, uh because it has the historic flooding.
Okay.
And then uh adding a better um roadway in that Fourth Avenue is the intent as well.
Any questions on stormwater? Uh one question I do have related to stormwater is uh, I know we have a stormwater fee on our utility bills. Um but I know that's always been struggle to, cuz that goes into levees, that goes into, I remember that pays into levees is not. I know at least culverts.
Oh, yes.
So, and tide gates, yeah, okay. Um do we? How do we feel about that fee?
You mean, is it too high or too low?
It's high enough, but I also don't know if people are willing to pay more, so. Um but I mean, it's a similar situation as we're running into sanitation. At some point, you run out of funds and then you can't. I'll tell you this, properties get a lot more angry when the house flooded because we didn't fix the stormwater problem. You know, the fee wasn't set the right.
I will say it's, it needs to have a rate re- review, but probably not immediately cuz I think we're gonna be discussing sanitation first.
Yeah, okay.
And it's, is it rate review only on residential or also commercial properties?
The storm sewer is twenty percent of your sewer bill, so it would be everyone.
Uh moving on to sanitation?
Uh Public Works Equipment, I believe.
Yeah, next. First up, we have a water treatment plant service truck. And then a hoist truck. And the third one will be the purchase of a garbage truck. Followed by a water treatment plant air compressor. And then a closed caption television van, this is for scoping stormwater and sewer sewer pipes.
Now, I take it we can't buy these service trucks on the same way we buy police vehicles and fleet purchases?
Not necessarily. Often we have to go to the specific vendor. They don't often have like the governmental. Um some of them have a governmental rate, but not all of them. Sometimes they're very specific. We we do usually try that first and and review it. But often it's specific vendors based on what it is.
Okay, so I just know like pursuit related vehicles were like forty grand, forty three and I see seventy, so, alright.
The next up is a one ton service truck. Followed by another garbage truck for future year. Another one ton service truck and then a new backhoe. And then.
And I I did wanna point out, you will see the two garbage trucks are very close together in years. Um that is for future conversation about rates for sanitation. Um we do have staff saying the amount of service time for our current routes, they would, they wish they had a third truck to service all of those. Of course, that's also a staff issue then. Um but as you see, the twenty twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven is not a realistic at this time, at, cuz capital reserve takes a while to build up for just one. Um but there is a question about that, when, when we would be able to budget that in in the future. And then also a conversation about sanitation rates will be coming up soon.
Public Works actually had two new garbage trucks in this fiscal year's request, but we cannot afford two garbage trucks this year.
I'm surprised this is what, four forty for them?
It's gonna be more.
I'm, yeah, I think they're gonna be more like six fifty, seven hundred.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that real quick cuz we, we did discuss that when we were putting the CIP together and doing our review cuz we'll only have spending authority for when we get to the budgeting stage.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Need to make sure we budget enough.
There's also the carb rules, implementation too, that might throw wrenches in them.
So you're saying the estimate's garbage? Sorry.
I didn't put the estimate together, but it sounds like we maybe need to have a quick conversation about this after later this week.
I'd love it if it was four forty, but as you all know, things are going up rapidly, so.
Alright, um alright, next one. Going to uh.
I think that's it, is that it?
Um and this will come before us for final adoption next, nope.
It comes before you for final adoption when you approve the budget.
Right, that's right, okay.
Which is June, so it's ready for July.
Hopefully the first meeting in June is our goal.
Well, is there any other questions on the CIP?
Um for projects like the electrical and like door replacement, do we partner with Job Corps or like any training facility to allow students to have opportunities to to practice those skills? It's just out of mind cuz I, Job Corps just send a bunch of emails to our commission email.
We don't typically, um I'm not sure if they're skilled in low voltage and things like that, but that's required for the ADA doors. So there is some challenge. It's not just a full door replacement, there's also low voltage that's required for wiring the the door opener. Um so we don't necessarily reach out to Job Corps for those jobs.
We do.
We have.
Yeah, we have used them as um temporary staff out at the Marina.
Okay, it just seems like a good partnership and opportunity to expose them to different work, so.
Alright, any other questions?
All information.
Yes, thank you. We'll stand adjourned.